I used to live out thirty-two acres of rural country. And when my son finds that out, he's still happy. That we don't still there. Uh huh. And then he could hunt every day. All right, um.
Yeah, sure.
The mayor's on his, Louise didn't have the mayor on his way up?
I just want to do it justice then.
All right, we can start going over the, um, agenda for the committee, the whole meeting tonight. We will review the agenda items, of course, the minutes from last week or last meeting. Anybody have any concerns? We also have the meetings for the public hearing. Thank you, Stephanie.
From the one person?
Yes, she worked really hard on those. Um, next, um, this is, I think this is pretty exciting. A resolution authorizing contract for employee assistance program with ESI. Uh, where it looks like we're moving providers. Um, I don't know, Chris must talk about this or Louise.
Actually, I'm gonna turn it over to Louise.
Okay, yeah.
Um, I just want to make sure that, that all the points are hit perfectly.
So, I mean, Kim is, is most familiar with this, but, um, and we, it's in our contracts that we offer an EAP program. It's sort of like counseling services, you know, that we're making available to employees. And we had a program with Saint Mary's, um, and they're just, their cost was going up. And this was just a more affordable alternative. But it's just something that we, we, was required in our, all our union contracts.
Well, it looks like it offers more to our employees as well, which is really good. And I hopefully encourage our employees to utilize these because, and there's a lot for us that we could use should we have some kind of like bad situation at Citywide.
It's just like support services that are being available to our employees.
Thank you.
All right, so the cost will go up, but it's only gonna be about a thousand dollars a year total. Um, great. The next one, resolution authorizing budget transfer wastewater treatment plant mechanical repairs.
Tell, what?
One second.
Sure. So you said, what did you just say? You said it was only going to be a thousand? That's an increase of a thousand.
Yeah, the annual increase cost to city will be about a thousand dollars, which is less than what it would have been if we stayed in the old plan.
This document attached says four thousand dollars for an annual.
It is the total annual?
Yeah.
Yes, they're saying the increase in the previous year.
So it's just, so the actual cost shouldn't be stated, not just the increase.
So the annual costs?
It was expressed per employee, I mean, we don't, um, I mean, I don't know if, if we just give them, um, I don't really, this is the part I'm not really clear on. If we just contract with them for a set number of employees and if it goes up later, we have to adjust our cost. I'm not really sure because the number of employees fluctuates and it could potentially affect our cost. I just thought it was best to state it in terms of the number, you know, per employee amount. I don't know how often they adjust our premium based on a change in the number of employees.
So they're saying they're covering a hundred fifty-six employees.
So what you'd like is a line in here that says for the, the total amount?
Yeah, we need the code, we also need the code where, my assumption is that we have to.
And I'd enter into the.
Kim, and this is something that Kim really has more, more involvement with. And I'm assuming we have to remind them with a list of our employees.
Right.
So they know who's eligible for services. And I just don't, you know, how often we're updating that list. But if we suddenly send them, you know, a list with ten more employees, it's gonna adjust our, it's gonna affect our cost. So that's why I think it's kind of like a fluid thing. That's why I, I expressed it in terms of.
This is something.
Right, and I don't think we need a code for it.
This is something you have to offer.
Yeah.
If you look at the page three of six, you'll see on the bottom optional services, you're a partner with global clients for online compliance.
Oh, yeah, I don't have fun with that. I know we've done this, we do it up here, so it's fine.
That's why.
I was just saying.
And it's something in part of the contract that you need to offer. So we're giving them an option to offer, and then you'll see the fee on the next page.
Yeah, we're just authorizing it in the contract. I don't know that we would have to have a funding line if this were the amount of, it would be in each department, like payroll.
That's, um, oh, health insurance. Okay.
Right, that's where the.
Okay, good.
See, it does say here, if the number of covered employees increases or decreases more than five percent, you're totally agreeing that value will be revised.
Okay.
Gotta be interesting.
All right, so moving on to the, uh, next one of the wastewater treatment mechanical repairs, Alderman Holiday. For, Mike, sorry.
I, yeah, why don't, you wanna, yeah, so this is, um, it's an auger conveyor that's used, um, to sludge into the trucks. Um, it's, it's, um, pretty worn down. Uh, the auger itself is more than over two inches and it's not doing sludge. It's actually building up inside the conveyor housing now and coming over the sides. And the guys have to come up and it's not, um, and unplugging the chutes and it's very, uh, it's not the best atmosphere for them to be in. So, um, there's this auger that's, uh, is needed.
Is this, did we, did we buy this, um, not too long ago?
No, this auger.
This has been around forever?
But this is an older piece of equipment.
When we, when we, uh, have we used this when we load, uh, when we load the?
Yeah, we use it to load, load down our sleds on the trucks.
But we also bought a piece of equipment to level out the load, didn't we not once?
We, no, what we did there, I know what you're talking about. We, what we did there was a modification of our chute.
Okay.
This auger will feed that chute.
Right, okay.
But now we can't get it to it unless we.
And does this help, does this help us with the, uh, taking in the sledge from outside?
Well, in certain, if, if, we need it for all sleds, including, including taking.
Okay, well, I'm just, I was, I'm, I'm just asking those questions because I remember us dealing with this issue.
No, you're correct, we did, but it was for, uh, the, the next piece of equipment in that train.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Thank you. Um, the next one is Alderman Marcello, budget transfer DPW equipment and tools replacement.
What we're gonna do is we're gonna take money from this, here's the budget, and we're gonna transfer it into the line item for equipment. And it's not gonna affect either salt or affect any type of, uh, salt or equipment tool because we're gonna use this money to transfer over to get the repairs in the line item where it says equipment repairs.
So are we gonna sell the equipment that's not worn? We're gonna sell salvage, we have any salvage?
No, we're selling it. We're replacing used and worn out excavation and blacktop equipment and with no additional expense, we charge for the leased vehicle line.
We don't need that anymore money on that.
We don't need it, we don't, it's, it's.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, we're replacing, you're gonna find out the budget this year. We're gonna buy it.
That's okay, I just wanna know, you can sell the salvage, the stuff that's not.
I don't even think it's worth it, is it, Mike?
It's scrap. One of the things you're talking about, I believe, is a, a couple of buckets on our, on one of the backhoes, which they're so old, they're great, they've been broken.
I told, when I talked to the equipment guys out in the water department, it's so bad they came to retransfer over, they came to use it. So that's why in this year's budget this year, we're buying it right now.
I just, I need to, uh, an amendment to this one. The increased expense shouldn't be in the G line, it should be to A point five one one zero, point four zero four two. I'm saying replacement parts, not equipment repair. Please.
The increased expense should be what?
The increased expense should be account A dot five one one zero dot four zero four two, and that is replacement parts.
So we need to amend that or just we?
Okay. Can we get an amendment?
Great. Thank you. Uh, the next one, in the same vein, water filter repairs.
Oh, that's, uh, ready to talk about this. So the, uh, transfer of this amount is for repairing three of our seven filters. One of them is currently out of service, uh, two of the other ones are, are showing beginning stages of failure. We've kind of followed this, I've worked with Mike and Zach on this, to come up with a solution, um, for a more robust underdrain, uh, that'll hold the material and withstand higher pressures than what was originally installed. And that's what this is doing, uh, to lead old underdrain, um, and we've researched that, we've actually sent that off. They, uh, took, uh, information from our facility, ran it through their own labs to see, to make sure that this is something that would work. It was sent off, uh, to the Department of Health for them to look at as well, so we've been working with them. Uh, also, so this would be to do three of the, the set of filters.
Any questions on that?
Um, Randy, now these, the, the ones that are failing are like seven or eight years old, correct?
Um, it might not be wide out.
Okay, and, but we don't have, we didn't, we didn't have a, a warranty or?
No, nothing that's.
Nothing that's. Now, on these, will that be the same case? It's pretty much, you know, we're depending upon the engineers?
Mike, you remember what the warranty on those was, was it a year, was it longer through the?
Well, there's two different warranties, remember? There's a product warranty.
Right.
I don't know what that, generally, they're, those are two years on, on water treatment, wastewater equipment, that type of thing. Then there's the, the warranty I think you're referring to is part of our construction contract, which is one year, uh, from the time of substantial completion. We're beyond that window on either one of them. Um, the, I, I've gone through, to Randy's point, I've gone through and submitted certification to Department of Health that they exceed, uh, the requirements. And after an in-kind replacement, we have to do that, well, yeah, we are beyond the replacement.
But beyond the replacement, but with the new ones that we put in, is it gonna be the same setup? We are not gonna have a warranty if this should happen again in four or five years?
We're going to have a warranty for a couple of years.
Two years, that's, so we got a two-year, that's it?
Just for example, the uplift, not the old tiles, the uplift was what, four to five PSI, thereabouts, and these are like fourteen, and that's where we're seeing issues.
But when we installed them based upon the engineering, they told us they were blast.
That was, that was part of the overall, it was like a package plan.
Yeah, and we were thinking fifteen years?
So that was all part of that, so we're.
I would expect longer than that, quite honestly.
Yeah.
The, the, the bottom line is, is I, uh, based on my review of the product and the, and the quick.
You're hoping it sells the price.
These are, the, the other ones were failing in backwash mode. Our pressures were running right around five PSI.
Right.
Five to six PSI, which was actually the maximum pressure rating of the previous units. And the, the units that we're replacing, the, the underdrain units we're gonna install now are rated at almost fourteen PSI, which is, so we've got more than a factor of safety of two.
Did we, did we do the same tests on the old ones when we put, when we got them? Do you know?
Well, it's, it's more calculation. That was always engineered as part of the original.
All right, I'm just, yeah, no, I know we need them, I just wanted to understand what we're, what, what the future holds for us in case the same thing should happen again, we don't expect.
Well, it should be fifteen, twenty year life.
I would expect fifteen to twenty year, okay.
Thank you.
All right, the next one is a bond issuance.
Yes, and this bond is, we borrowed, we bonded thirty, uh, thirty million one hundred thousand dollars, and we don't have the money, so we need to borrow an additional twelve million nine hundred thousand dollars to cover the cost of the sewage processing capacity and efficiency. All right?
Alderman, if I, if, if I could?
Yeah, go ahead.
This, uh, we, we don't, we, we will not likely need to borrow any of this money. This, this is in support of our, um, just like every time we do a grant application or a funding application, we need, we have the supporting bond resolution to show the city's commitment to, to the project. We're, we're right at the, the final stages of submitting our application to New York State Environmental Facilities Corp. for Clean Water SRF money, which is the last piece of the funding of this project. Um, that, that total amount that you see there includes a substantial contingency, um, that is not likely to be part of the, needed in the final project, number one. And I would also remind you that, too, that, uh, just, uh, the beginning of the year, we were awarded another ten million dollars of funding, uh, through the Water Quality Improvement Program Grant, WQIP.
So are we showing faith that we got the money?
That's just showing faith, I don't expect that we're actually gonna need to take that bond.
All right, thank you.
And the total would be thirty million dollars, it's not, and we started at seventeen, right, and we're adding twelve something to get to thirty. It's not, we're not adding twelve to thirty.
Right.
That's a scary number, none of these are both scary numbers. All right, the next one also, another bond, um, and this is regarding the cost of a pavilion and other improvements to city-owned golf courses.
Well, you can talk on this one. We're borrowing a million, a million dollars of money, right?
Right, um, as everybody knows, we're in, in the effort to build a new clubhouse. In order to build that new clubhouse, we have to finance it. We have received a grant from, uh, Senator Breslin for three hundred thousand dollars, and we have looked at three options. Um, one of, uh, one of the options falls below that amount, two of the options fall above that amount. Um, what we did was we have, uh, I've distributed those options to the Alderman, to the Golf Commission, um, and I've asked for inputs. Uh, Megan Pedrazek, who's also our concessionaire this year, has also looked at everything, come back with some recommendations. And what I did was I took the list of what people liked and did not like, and I went back to the designer, and I said to the designer, can you do this? Can you give us a fourth option? Uh, and the fourth option for two reasons, uh, to include things that everybody said they wanted in them, and to try to bring the price down to a, the option that everybody would prefer, to a point where we could afford to build it. So I, just before this meeting started, I got the, I've got the fourth option. And I think this, the, the beauty of this fourth option is that it's a one build thing, there's no phase one, phase two. Uh, it, it answers all of the concerns, addresses all of the concerns that, um, were, were presented to us regarding what, what they felt they needed. For example, this option would have a full kitchen in it. This option would have, um, two bathrooms, a bar, and then the capacity that we're looking for inside. And, um, I'm gonna, I'm, do we have this, can we pull this up, Steph? We might as well look at it together now.
I mean, I wish we knew you were going out for a fourth option.
Well, again, I, I, I wouldn't have gone out with fourth option if I had consensus on the three that we have. And you'll see the fourth option, I think is.
I think I'd like to finish my sentence, which is that, like, we were gonna talk about the three options today, so.
And we can still.
I didn't bother writing back to the email because it doesn't tend to be fruitful, and so you don't have any of my thoughts, and I don't know if you have everybody's thoughts on it. But I said, like, hey, I'm gonna go out, back to Saratoga Associates' last call, um, I thought last call was today.
Well, here's a fourth option before you get me, make the last call, you got until Thursday. And this is the fourth option, this is totally built, okay? And if you just, uh, can we scroll?
Yes.
It, it's, it has, uh, everything we want, just keep going, we'll just go through the. I guess I should save that. Sorry. How many lines? Um, so the bar, the kitchen, the bathrooms, um, it has open dining and a heated element, so it could be, you could continue servicing in the, in the winter time if you wanted to. It has a huge covered patio, it has a huge open patio. If you open the doors between these units, you can seat a hundred and, uh, fifty to a hundred and eighty people in there comfortably with, with the bar. Um, this is, these are just pictures of the interior, these are the types of doors we'd be using, it'd be those sliding panel doors. This is what it would look like from the back with a patio. Um, this is an open air, um, room that can be closed down, this is an open patio, this is the main building. It has two fireplace elements in it now, uh, one on the outside, one on the inside. This is all open, as you can see, you can see lounge areas, fire pits, et cetera. This is the back patio that would be facing the course. The pros, moderate upfront cost, it's square footage, patio acts as, uh, extension of the restaurant and covered patio. Construction may affect only one golf season, cheaper than building in phases, full commercial kitchen included, a hundred and fifty people maximum that covered an open patio, slightly over the one point three million dollar budget. It's actually one point five four million dollars to build this. Design differs from the original proposal, it's asymmetrical, it's got a smaller interior restaurant area, the covered patio and dining space are divided, that's the cons. The view from patio is less panoramic than scheme one or two, and wood burning fireplaces add, would be adding maintenance. And these are the size and cost comparisons, you can't read these, but you'll get this handout, I, I'm gonna be sending this to each of you. But I didn't want you to pass this resolution without looking at scheme four. And to understand that, um, it's a fourth option that addresses all of the concerns that have so far been shared with me, uh, including from our concessionaire, that addresses all of them and within a budget that I feel is affordable. We were talking two point one, two point five, two point two to get to this point, and now I think we're at a one point five solution, um, that gives everybody everything they want. And here's, here's the, here's the scheme. The first scheme was a hundred and twenty-five people, two-phase construction, we built something now we could add to in the future. Scheme two was the whole thing, two forty-four total. Scheme three was, uh, was the whole thing, and a lot of you liked, a lot of you liked scheme three, but the price of scheme three, let's go to the next one. The price of scheme three was one eight two five, um, one eight two five all-in is a three-season venue, and then it was over two million for a four-season venue. This is one five four oh, all-in with a four-season capability. Um, so it's an option, I will send it to you, if you have, you, you take a look at it, we don't need to decide today, we're still gonna pass the same resolution, we're still looking for the same amount of money at this point in time. Um, and if we, if you choose option four, if we choose option four, if it comes in as the, as the, as the one we go with, um, we'll be able to afford that.
So it's one point seven for the four-season?
No, 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 we're all in. The scheme four, oh yeah, I see that one seven.
Yeah.
What do you do there?
That's, looks like it's the winner, it's the.
Oh, that's the winterize the other half of it, the first, this, this part of it is winterized. This part of it is winterized, that would be, no, that's not scheme four. This scheme.
That's actually the picture from scheme two.
Yeah, this is scheme two, I think he made a, I think he made a mistake.
Yeah.
Because, go back to scheme one.
Yeah, because he had scheme two.
No, it's this one.
No, it's not this one either.
It's this one, scheme one, yeah, he confused it. Yeah, he confused it, I'm sorry. So scheme one, one one eight is wrong.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, he made a mistake, and I just got this and I apologize. But he, uh, the portion of scheme one that's interior has been winterized. Now, what hasn't been winterized is the large patio deck. And to, and to winterize that large patio deck, which is not something we envision doing, would be that additional money.
When's that start update?
Um, it's immediate, I mean, if, once, once we pick a design, they'll, they'll finish, they'll finish the design drawings and they'll bid the job, and we'll get the thing built, um, as quickly as we possibly can so that it's open. You know, I'm not gonna say opening day next year, but it'll definitely be open next year during the golf season as early as possible. So that's all I wanted to give you, uh, and I will send you these, um, as, for your consideration. I do believe that after talking to, uh, after, you know, looking at what was sent back to me, talking to all of you, I think this is a great option for our golf course, and it's something I, again, I think we can afford. Um, so. But this resolution.
We borrowed a million dollars.
This resolution permits us to borrow a million dollars towards the man, towards the product, the, uh, the construction of that golf course.
Thank you. Any questions on the million dollars?
When it, when we make an official decision, how will that be made? Will it be passed by resolution, will it be just decided?
Has to be passed by resolution.
Yeah, has to be passed by resolution.
Next one is.
By the way, I, I just have one question. So if we had used insurance money, we had gotten one point six, right?
Right. Right. We've gotten one point six million to refurbish the old clubhouse.
And we've been using money from that each year, transferring money over to the inter fund balance.
We did, we, we sent them the whole, the whole one point six, which they use to draw down the deficit, so.
Correct. And we have till Thursday to weigh in on this?
Um, we would like to make a decision by this Thursday so that we can tell the architect which one we wanna go with, and then we would come back, we would do an emergency, uh, emergency session, and you have to give the council a chance to vote on that.
Yeah, I just ask that we be informed of these plans before the public is.
Okay.
We're gonna discuss the same thing for the tonight, or?
I don't think, unless, unless anybody wants to ask questions.
I need to ask the concessionaire a question, is that right?
Yes, absolutely, I mean.
Uh, Megan, now you, you saw the layout and how this is?
She really has.
Do you have any, any, uh, input?
Uh, so my only input for everyone is that, looking at the first three schemes, we do not have a full kitchen. So, um, everything that we've spoke about, in order to give an actual clubhouse feel and to put out an à la carte service, even for three seasons, we would need to have a full kitchen. Every option that we spoke about was building some type of additional kitchen, using a temporary kitchen, and all of those things are unrealistic for the service that we're trying to provide. So in scheme four, from what I've briefly seen and, um, what I've heard, is that that is giving us that full kitchen and still within a reasonable budget. When we're looking at the first three schemes, we're not getting a kitchen in that price range, just so everybody understands that at that one point eight or that two point four, that is still without any kitchen, just a warming area for us to hold food in, which therefore we wouldn't be able to provide any type of à la carte service out of there.
Okay, thank you very much.
What I would wanna see would be a full kitchen priced into all of those, because it's a no-brainer to have a full kitchen, I think you need a full kitchen.
I agree with you.
Yeah, so like, I, I think we should just scrap, and I don't wanna keep kicking the can down the road, but scrap all the warming kitchen idea and just, let's look at it all with a full kitchen, and then maybe we could really make a decision based on what we think's best.
So.
Wasn't a full kitchen an extra three hundred dollars? Well, no, I, I'm not.
So when we originally met with Saratoga Associates and we were looking at those three schemes and we've talked about the kitchen, so it's an additional expense one, and it's also a redesign. So when you were looking at that space, the kitchen area was not designed into any of those, so we could look at that, then they would have to alter the design completely. Why? Because obviously we have anse systems, we have water issues, you have to make sure that that kitchen is in a certain area of that building. So if the warming kitchen did not need any of those things, maybe they can't put a full kitchen there. So they would have to redesign all three of those with a kitchen, which is fine, I'm sure we could do that, it's just, that's just a huge added expense and time for everyone.
Well, I, but, but also, I think that the, the estimated cost of adding a full kitchen to any of those is about two hundred thousand dollars, that's what's gonna come in.
That's what I wanted to know, yeah.
Yes.
When you said in the scheme four, there's already a full kitchen in there.
There is a full kitchen. The biggest, the biggest request that I got from, from the most amount of people was that there be a full kitchen added in.
Okay.
That was the, one of the things I conveyed to them, I was gonna say, put full kitchens in all of them, but then the other things that came in said, okay, we don't like this, we don't like this, we don't like this. I took all the things that they liked and I put it together, and one thing I said to the designer, this is what they like, what can you do for us?
Okay, so just for clarification, scheme four, that already has this price with a full kitchen in it.
Full kitchen in it.
Okay, so any other scheme we're talking about, one, two, or three, you gotta add another three hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I'm not gonna say three, I'm gonna say two for sure.
Okay, let's say two.
Right.
So that's still about the price.
No, it would, it would definitely raise the price of each of them, uh, you know.
But not four.
But not four.
Not four, it's in four.
Okay, I understand, thank you. Chris?
I understand.
We're good.
Thank you. And, um, it's time for the, we have to, we gotta, you wanna finish the count? Can we do that without Paul and Seth? Well, I just wanted to also mention, um, I just forgot what I wanted to mention, so I guess we'll finish the count. Um, I wanted to mention one more thing about the clubhouse. I completely lost my train of thought.
But we'll put that into the regular meeting because we have three more resolutions to go over.
Okay.
It's our meeting. Um, so the next one is awarding the, let's see, I always move these backwards.
Two ten.
Two ten, yep, okay, awarding the bid for the street paving program. Mike, we've got, sorry, Alderman Marcello, just jumped Mike on this one. Got our bids?
Yes, so what you have for you is this one twenty.
Yes, so what you have for you is the 2024 results from our bid opening. Keep in mind, as we've discussed many times, this is for the base bid, that's how I bid this project. And it's bid based on unit prices that everybody has asked me, or was asking me to predict what prices were going to look like this year. I had no idea, now I can tell you they're about, on the whole, 10% lower than the previous couple of years, which is a nice trend. This year's low bidder is Kalanand Industries, you know, we can't go wrong with them. Very reputable, done a lot of work in the city and across New York State. So I recommend that we award the paving program to them. It's also worth noting that just last week, we received official confirmation of our total chips allocation this year. It actually a couple thousand dollars more than it was previous year. So we were funded at approximately 2.17 million dollars. That's in excess of, it's right around 500,000 over our base bid. The good news about that is we'll certainly be able to do quite a few of the alternates as well.
So we'll pass this tonight and then, I know we've had a lot of different side conversations about how to spend the chips money. Are we going to like bring that back to the table?
Yeah, absolutely, I will, I will bring it, we can discuss the alternates again. You know, you folks set the priorities, by all means. I'm going to make an interesting point too, now I just lost it.
I can do the same thing.
We got to close that window, all everybody's like, are flying out the window, yeah.
What the heck was I going to say? Yeah, I'll bring you the, the alternate bag with everybody, you know.
Everyone should reach out to you with their thoughts, yeah.
So I know what it was. When I, when we do these paving jobs, we are, they're unit price jobs, so the quantities matter. We have our estimates of all the different quantities for the base bid. We've been, we've been very accurate the last few years. So what we do is we're tracking these quantities every week, sometimes multiple times during the week. When we get into this and, you know, knowing where we're tracking, whether it's above or below the 1.6 million dollar award for the base bid, then we'll know whether we can release, how many of those alternate streets we can release to the contractor in addition to the, to the base bid. We don't have to wait until we're halfway through to release. Then, but, you know, we want to get the contract underway, it also gives us time to discuss here in the committee, what those, what everyone's preference is for.
And we'll put them in order.
Priorities on the alternates.
And you'll put them in the order of, right?
Yeah.
Any questions for Mike on that? For the engineer, sorry. All right, the next one is regarding MVP. Oh, it's short, but the mayor's authorized to enter into an agreement of MVP healthcare from July 1st to July 30th, increase of 8.5%.
Any questions on that? Alderman? I couldn't resist, I'm sorry.
It's about 4 million, I mean, let's get it.
Our rate increase, it was 8.5%.
Yeah, I mean, they started with 15.
It started at 15 and we got to 3.5. The total value, the total dollars spent is, was remediated by the fact that we found, you know, people on coverages that they, we could, we could bring them to Medicare and stuff, continue. So it was a great audit by Louise. So we're actually right around the same number.
I love it, yeah.
We leveled it right off, so it's great news.
And this is, this is good news, but I know we've had this like 8.5 number for a while. So I just don't understand why the resolution's one sentence.
Resolution's one sentence?
It's because that was the format of the one that was done last year. And I just found out Sunday that they needed this, it was supposed to go on the 521 agenda, and they, or left from our posters that they needed this sooner rather than later, so we added that as a consent. And I just, Stephanie sent me what was approved last year and I just copied it.
Okay. All right, and the next one, we have some demolition bids. Alderman Marcello?
As you can read, the other, second whereas, it contains a brief file from emergency demolitions that we already did. And then the first whereas, identified we've required, requiring demolition disposal. So a lot of these things, the fire department knocked down, they're all.
So we're looking for, we're going out to bid to get these all cleaned up?
Yes.
Excellent. Other questions? Let's have the meeting.
To the land of the United States of America, to the republic of the United States, under the badge of the freedom and justice of the world.
Alderman Chris Mars, here. Alderman Holiday?
Here.
Alderman Collins? Alderman Carpenter?
Here.
Alderman Marcello?
Here. Okay. Motion to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda with three consents.
Alderman Chris Mars?
Aye.
Alderman Holiday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
Alderman Marcello?
I don't believe we have any proclamations tonight, so we're going to move right on to the communications and presentations, of which we have two. And we have Jake Reed here. Jake has been an advocate of renewable energy in our city for a long time. Jake, I thank you first of all for your efforts in that area. And you're here to talk about the City of Amsterdam Renewable Energy Committee, you'd like to start, correct?
Yeah.
All right, come on in.
Good evening, my name is Jacob Reed, I'm a resident of Amsterdam. I'm on the City of Amsterdam Planning Commission as well. I'm here to speak to you guys today about starting a committee for renewable energy in the city of Amsterdam. Basically, the goal of this committee would be to increase renewable, increase renewable energy in a city, reduce energy costs for the city and its residents, reduce emissions and increase grid reliability within the city. The panel would meet to discuss how to implement renewable energy sources within a city, including possible locations, the cost and the benefits to the community. The panel would meet online over Zoom or another video conference site once or twice a month. And the findings by the panel would be reported to the common council and may have further action. And also, the panel would have an emphasis on people who reside in the city, but also residents of town of Amsterdam or town of Florida who would also like to share their opinions, would also be included on this as well.
We have handed out Jake's outline of what he wanted the committee to do to lead up the last meeting. And does anyone have any questions? Jake, why don't you give us some examples of?
I don't think we have.
I don't have, I don't have that. No, I do. I'm sorry.
But anyway, Jake, if you could, yeah, if you want to go over that or talk about some of your, what you think my initiative might be? Or something that you might like start, dive right into?
Yeah, basically, there's a whole bunch of ideas that float around in my head, like just going through the city scene, oh, you know, you can do that, but, you know, this parking lot or this building. For example, right now, there's a lot of solar farms being built across the area. There's a lot of pushback from that, from residents. And a lot of people would like to see more solar on already developed areas. So, for example, some city-owned parking lots, like the library parking lot, could have solar car canopies on it, that could produce energy for either the library or go right to the grid. But basically, the committee would look at projects like that, look at what it would entail, the cost for it, basically getting all the info for you guys to make the decision on how to go forward with a project like that.
I'm sorry, I thought I, I thought I gave you this, but it would be a non-binding type of advisory committee that would look at the, at the issues that, you know, for instance, electric vehicles. If we wanted to purchase an electric vehicle, one of the things that we could do is ask Jake's committee to take a look at some of the options for us. And he would come back and, you know, give us a, give us a, again, it would be a non-binding, it would be a group of people who are concerned with that and dedicated to that, giving us just a second opinion, right Jake?
Yes.
Any great idea?
Hmm?
Any great idea?
It is a great idea and I apologize because I, how did you get on the agenda? Oh, I.
Well, you brought it up at the last meeting.
And I didn't hand out a list of the things at the last meeting on the agenda, on the things that he wanted to do?
No. And so I reached out to Jake and we put him on the agenda.
Oh, you were.
Yeah, I like how it would expand to like throughout the area because I know that, you know, the greater Amsterdam district, because I, some of our commissions are just, you know, people have to live in the city, but we're so intertwined with the town of Florida, the town of Amsterdam, Fort Johnson, you know. It's great that we could partner with them and, and, you know, advise all of them.
Yeah, and the more people we have that can share their ideas and have knowledge on the issues would be, you know. Instead of having a few people in the city, you know, have many people across the area. I told you.
I've seen some of those canopies in other cities.
Yeah.
That goes towards the overall power grid, or does it go towards specific buildings surrounding it?
It can go right to the grid, it can go into buildings surrounding, surrounding the canopy. It could even charge, or power charging stations that are underneath it as well, so. And actually, the library parking lot has little fast chargers there for, for electric vehicles, so it could even power that as well.
Yeah, I think that'd be very interesting, it's kind of the new way. Do you have like an idea of how many people you'd want on it? Do you have people in mind or people express interest?
Not really, kind of just starting from scratch, see who would be interested. Probably as many people as we can get, you know, like I said, I think.
You had mentioned some candidates to me, right? Some people you had talked to?
Yes, previously, I, some people that I've known for a little bit that have interests in environmental issues.
Well, Jake is on the planning commission and he's a, he's a good man and I, you know, I think anytime that we can get citizens who are interested in helping our city in an area where we have to focus our attention, it's a good thing. And this is the type of thing where, you know, it's a non-binding type thing, but it's, it's as a, as a consulting. You know, give us, give us other ideas. So how would this work, Anthony, just a?
It could be a referral, on a referral type basis.
Right, in terms of, we don't have any, we'd have to pass any kind of resolution or?
I mean, something that we might consider for a different meeting perhaps.
Yep.
To make it a more formal or official relationship, I suppose. I'd have to think about it.
All right, give me some time.
Some kind of acknowledgement of it, yeah.
Yeah, just so you have some, something from us that says, you know, we'll put that together, Jake. I don't think there's any objection to.
I mean, I, I have some objection regarding, you know, the, solar's great, but, you know, after a handful of years, it becomes antiquated technology. And as we're seeing even now in some of the solar farms, panels have gotten more efficient, smaller. You probably know better than anybody the difficulty of recycling solar can't really, right? So are we going to get stuck in 10, 15 years with an eyesore of, let's say, canopies or stuff on roofs or in our empty space in lots that we need drastically, that space? Are we going to get stuck with junk, you know, in 15 years? That's, that's my only concern.
Yeah, and that's, that's what the panel would look at, talking with companies, trying to see what, you know, their recycling initiatives, there's a few companies that do recycle all their panels. So that's, that's what the panel would do, is look at all that first. Even if it's a list of pros and cons to give to the common council, you know, you guys are the decision makers, we're just giving you the info as to what, you know, what's project, what entails and stuff like that.
Good point, Richard.
You're doing all the research for us.
Right, I mean, yeah, I always love more research.
Everyone really knows more than we do.
Yes, and the panel would be the ones doing the research, we would just present our findings.
We just received a $23,000 grant to purchase something that would make us greener. I'm going to put it that way, I don't know any other way to put it. And it's an automatic grant. And I think one of the things that we could do with a committee like yours is say, you know, how best could we invest this $23,000? It's, they are giving us to do something. And you're, like you say, you give the council pros and cons as just some things to think about. I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, and it's, it's also, we're not really pushing for the projects, it's basically.
You're being an objective.
Coming up with projects saying, you know, this is kind of the impacts of this project, you know. Whether it's, for example, another one is, you know, we have old dams along the Chuckman. And the state is, if they're serious about switching to renewables, there could be money out there to retrofit some of them into hydroelectric dams. So that's something we would look at too and try to find all the information we can about those.
All right, well, I'm going to talk to the corp cons, I apologize, I'm going to just send this out to the council members so you can take a look at it. And at the next meeting, we will discuss this and get back to you in terms of how we could set that up, if everybody's in agreement. You know, set up something where you could provide us with the inputs that you'd like to provide us with, yeah. All right?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next on the agenda is?
The Recreation Department was next, but Mr. Spagnolo's on vacation this week, so he's coming to the next one.
Okay.
Is this a good place to talk about veterans or is that a new business one?
You want to talk about veterans' field?
You, you sent an email, I thought you wanted to talk about that tonight.
Well, I'd sent it, I, I sent it to inform you, I'm ready to answer any questions you have about it. I sent, I sent it to tell you about an incident that took place of vets and what we, you know, where we are with that and what we are doing with vets. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Delay that till after the meeting?
Delay it till?
Yeah, till after the meeting.
Do the meeting and then talk about it under the new business.
After the Thursday meeting?
No, after this meeting.
Oh, okay.
Under, we'll put that under other?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's put that under other. All right.
So let's go to public participation at this point. Anyone that'd like to address the council, just step up and name a dress.
My name is David Muhula. I live at 45 Brookside Avenue in Amsterdam. And I more or less have the same complaint that I always had. There are two houses across the street from me that both have overhanging limbs, over power lines. One is at 4850 and the other one's at 5254. The one at 5254, I understand that codes went up there because I haven't seen this woman, her name is, William.
Yeah, we shouldn't talk about individuals.
I've got five minutes, don't I?
But we shouldn't be talking about private citizens.
I didn't mention the name.
You were about to, sir. Thank you.
How do you know?
Because you just started to think.
That's okay, David, go on, whatever you're talking about.
You're right, I, oh, I'm sorry. But both are overhanging limbs. And if they come down on the wires, we're going to have a problem. And secondly, I talked to Chief Agresta about the limbs going up Story Street, and he said that he would contact. Who'd you say, chief, I forgot that?
The person responsible for national grid.
National grid, but they're still up there. So other than that, I'm wondering when, if we're going to have a auction. If we're going to have an auction, I'd like to know when and where. If anybody could tell me. If we're gonna have an auction, I'd like to know when and where. If anybody could tell me that, I'd be happy. And to thank you again, Mayor, for the, uh-
The bus passed.
The bus passed, how'd you know?
I heard you.
Very, uh, coming handy for me, because I don't have a car. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Even family, named at Deluvenary, live at ninety-four Union Street. Keep it short, brief, and direct. Manhole covers on Grant Place, on the intersection of Brant and Union Street. They have now concreted, blocked off, so now the vehicles have to stop going up and down the hill, buses and trucks, so they can bypass around it. A vehicle got, uh, the manhole come off, a wheel went into one, uh, couple, three, five weeks ago maybe it was, uh, there was damage to the vehicle, I don't know how much, because I wasn't gonna stand out there in the rain. Also, uh, both catch basins on Union and Brant are overflowing because of the catch basin, the manhole cover in the center, because it's plugged, and they both directly go into that one. So, and it's, uh, starting to become, uh, they patched a hole about fifteen feet down from the manhole cover, and it's starting to sink in and getting, getting larger. So I'm waiting, I'm praying that when school gets out, somebody goes and digs it up and fixes it again, it hasn't been fixed since the eighties. It was a hell of a mess then. Uh, I also plead with, uh, like, have a do not enter sign, put just behind the major lane, uh, sign that goes into major lane. Uh, like, there's one down on Division Street and Guy that says, "Do not enter." They're coming down that hill and up that hill, and they're flying over major lane like there's no tomorrow. They, they have no concept of it, and there's children that go through there, uh, with, all the time, especially when school's out. The next thing is, is, uh, two years ago, uh, we talked about having crosswalks painted between the stairs and major lane, and between Union Street, upper and lower Union Street, where the young people cross. And I'm talking to very young people. Uh, if they still haven't been done, I would really respectfully ask if they get done this year, uh, when they start strip, striping lines. And also, in the parking lot that's close to the middle school, uh, needs to be striped. There's only been two stripes on there, uh, forever. They ran out of paint, and that's where it stopped. I'd like to have some, uh, parking, uh, status, status there, uh, that would be on the east side of the parking lot. Also, um, I request garbage pail. You put on the post at twelve Main Street, where it used to be locked onto, chained onto the post, with a rubber-made garbage pail inside. So I don't have to every other day or so go down there and pick up garbage, uh, from a pizza place, and from the, uh, I don't know, the club upstairs on fourteen. Now there's, uh, alcoholic glass bottles being broken out there also, don't know where they're coming from. But I know they pick up, the recreation picks up garbage at, uh, the park by the bus stop, uh, at Bergen Park. And it'd be very simple for them to pick the garbage pail up there. There always had been one there, two years ago, and all of a sudden, they stopped putting it there. Uh, especially with Springfield coming. I'm getting old, I can't keep doing this. You know, it's, it's getting to the point where, uh, it's gonna be rolling over, because I'm not gonna be able to do it, and then the people are gonna start complaining. Also, the house at thirteen McDonald's is starting to tip. It's, uh, going towards the driveway and backwards. If you look at it, uh, two years ago, they were gonna tear it down, and they stopped because, uh, there was some structural problem with it. It might be a good structural problem if it falls into the house down below it. Uh, it's, uh, getting pretty, pretty, uh, shaky there. Fourteen Grant Place, I'm starting to see people-
Mr. Deluvenary, your time is up.
Thank you. Thank you. Apologize.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Please, the control report?
I don't really have anything prepared for tonight, where, as you know, we're gonna start meeting Thursday evening to start reviewing the budget, so that's gonna be a big focus, um, in the next couple of weeks, um, but nothing else to really look forward to.
How's your conversion going? The conversion, how's it going?
It's going. A little, little bumpy, but nothing we didn't expect, but it's gonna be good.
Anyone have any questions for the controller? Okay, any new business?
No.
And we're onto new business? Resolutions?
Yes. Resolution twenty-three twenty-four dash two oh two, resolution adopted in the minutes of the last common council meeting by Alderman Christemars.
So move for discussion.
Can you please call the roll? Alderman Christemars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Alderman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three twenty-four dash two oh three, resolution authorizing contract for employee assistance program with ESI by Alderman Carpenter.
So move, open for discussion. Call the roll.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderman Christemars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
And Alderman, uh, Alderman Collins. Resolution twenty-three twenty-four dash two oh four, resolution authorizing budget transfer, wastewater treatment plant mechanical repairs by Alderman Holliday. Whereas, the city of Amsterdam wastewater treatment plant is in need of mechanical repairs to its sludge handling building. And whereas, the mechanical assembly in question is the sludge conveyor of our use to load semi-trailers. And whereas, that assembly is quoted at ten thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars and twenty-seven cents for parts and appurtenances, appurtenances only. Now therefore be it resolved, the controller is authorized to make the following twenty-three twenty-four budget transfer. Uh, decrease expense ten thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars and twenty-seven cents from sewer contingency to equipment repairs.
So move, open for discussion. You have to add the amendment.
Not yet.
Call the roll.
The next one. Uh, Alderman Holliday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
Alderman Marticello?
Aye.
Alderman Christemars?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three twenty-four dash two oh five, resolution authorizing budget transfer, DPW equipment and tools replacement by Alderman Marticello.
So move, discussion. Call the roll.
Uh, is, did you need a good amendment?
We do have a- Make an amendment, make a motion to amend.
Okay, so that, that will be adding, switching, uh, taking out eight point eight one two oh, point four zero two one, equipment repairs, and, and instead replacing it with eight point five one one zero, point four zero four two, replacement parts.
On the amendment.
Okay, Alderman Marticello?
Aye.
Alderman Christemars?
Aye.
Alderman Holliday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
As amended, Alderman Marticello?
Aye.
Alderman Christemars?
Aye.
Alderman Holliday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three twenty-four dash two zero six, resolution authorizing budget amendment, water filter repairs by Alderman Marticello.
So move, discussion. Call the roll.
Alderman Marticello?
Aye.
Alderman Christemars?
Aye.
Alderman Holliday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three twenty-four dash two zero seven, resolution authorizing the issuance of twelve point nine million dollars, additional bonds of the city of Amsterdam, Montgomery County, New York, to pay a portion of the thirty, uh, thirty point one million dollars, estimated maximum cost of the partial reconstruction and re-equipping of the city of Amsterdam wastewater treatment plant to improve sewage processing capacity and efficiency in Enforcetown City by Alderman Marticello.
So move, I have a discussion. Why does it say resolution authorizing issuance of twelve million, nine hundred thousand additional bonds? When he says we don't need them? Corporation council. I'm not, I'll defer to our controller to explain what we're gonna need the bonds for, or not need the bonds for.
It, Mike, I can explain it.
Yes, but-
It is, uh, a requirement for the, uh, application for state revolving funds for clean water.
So you need, so you need-
We need the bond resolution.
We need forty-two million dollars.
We, we need to bond for the total potential project that we're funded for.
Forty-three million?
No, 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 not forty-three million.
Thirty point one.
Thirty, thirty point one is what we're, what we are funded for.
The, you're like, what, seventeen, eighteen million is the project, right?
The, the project, where, where the escalation, yeah, and you're probably at twenty, but we're funded for thirty, that, that's what all our grants and, and B I L money total up to, whoa. As part of the application, the, the city needs to show a commitment that we're willing to.
I know that, I know that. What's the total amount?
Thirty point one, right.
See, the original was seventeen.
It's actually two and a half. But we have grants and everything coming to cover that.
I, I guess, I, I do not, uh, we have W Q I P in the amount of ten million dollars. We have, I'll tell you right now, we have, uh,
Mike is-
We have B I L and-
I, I understand. Chris had a question. Okay, Chris, um, no, I, I would make a statement to Mike, can you, just continuing? Go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
No, we're, so we're fully funded. We have a ten million dollar, uh, W Q I P grant that's coming first. We have a maximum amount of bill money up to eight, of, um, eight point three million dollars on top of that. We have a, we have a grant for four point three million dollars, and our clean water S R F grant is, is up to seven point five, or, uh, C W S R F money at zero percent is up to seven point five, that's the last piece of the money we would use, um, which would cover, if necessary, the total project of up to thirty million dollars. It doesn't mean the project's gonna be there.
No, it's up to thirty million. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mike. All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Call the roll.
Alderman Marticello? Alderman Christemars? Alderman Holliday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three twenty-four dash two zero eight, resolution authorizing the issuance of one million dollar in bonds of the city of Amsterdam, Montgomery County, New York, to pay the cost of construction of a pavilion and other improvements to the city-owned golf course in Enforcetown City by Alderman Marticello.
So move, discussion. Call the roll.
Alderman Marticello?
Aye.
Alderman Christemars?
Aye.
Alderman Holliday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye. Thank you.
Resolution twenty-three twenty-four dash two zero nine, resolution approving the audit by Alderman Collins. Resolve the bills and documentation of safe-
Open for discussion. Call the roll.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
Alderman Marticello?
Aye.
Alderman Christemars?
Aye.
Alderman Holliday?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two twenty-three, uh, sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. Resolution twenty-three twenty-four dash two ten, consent resolution awarding bid for the twenty twenty-four street paving program by Alderman Marticello. Whereas-
Uh, resolve, resolve clause.
Resolve, the Calanand Industries has awarded the city street paving contract for twenty twenty-four.
And they are the low bid. Discussion, they were so close, huh? Call the roll.
Alderman Marticello?
Aye.
Alderman Christemars?
Aye.
Alderman Holliday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
Mike, thank you very much, you did a great job.
Resolution twenty-three twenty-four dash two eleven, consent resolution authorizing contract, M V P Healthcare by Alderman Holliday. Resolve, the mayor, I'm so sorry. Resolve, the mayor's authorized to enter into-
That's why I'm making you read all these, by the way, tonight.
I'm so sorry. Resolve, the mayor's authorized to enter into an agreement with M V P Healthcare from July one, twenty twenty-four to June thirty of twenty twenty-five at a rate increase of eight point five percent.
So moved, for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Holliday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
Alderman Marticello?
Aye.
Alderman Christemars?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three twenty-four dash two one two, consent resolution authorizing bids, demolition of city properties at various locations by Alderman Marticello.
Uh, so move, and the reason being that this money's coming out of demolition line item. Okay? Call the roll.
Alderman Marticello?
Aye.
Alderman Christemars?
Aye.
Alderman Holliday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Thank you, yes.
So, um, you wanted to talk about Veterans Park at this point?
Aye.
You also need to go into executive session on Chief Flackton?
Right. I believe, Mayor, you're asking for, that two separate executive sessions, or it's one executive session with two issues relating to purchase and sale of real estate. It's Public Officer's Law, Section one oh five, sub one, sub, uh, H. Not that we're moving it right now, but at the proper time.
Just so you know, so you can talk about, now you can talk about veterans, any questions, issues, situation?
Well, I think, since, you know, the, the police chief is here as well, maybe just a little overview, um, it looks like you're taking into consider, you know, taking some immediate steps to, to help it, uh, the situation, but certainly would want a larger conversation about long-term. But if you guys just wanna wanna open up to council, we can talk about it?
Yeah, we can discuss it, yeah.
Yeah, we, we would like to.
Yeah.
Friday night, are we talking Friday night?
Yes.
Okay.
Friday night, there was a fight involving youths. We had an officer there in the park. Immediately, we're engaged with them and addressed the situation. Um, again, there are juvenile's involved. They're all under eighteen because of raised the age. Um, but they, there's a process that we have to go through to get them into feeling the court. But that was the issue that happened Friday.
Were there weapons involved?
There were no weapons involved in the fight. I believe somebody did have a weapon.
Okay.
In his bag. But nobody was trying to hold a weapon, nobody got hurt with a weapon, just none of that was involved.
And then, the school district did report that there was an, uh, issue at the high school that was kind of stemmed from this, it seems?
The carryover issue.
Carryover.
I can't speak for that, that's outside our jurisdiction. But we did respond up there to assist the sheriff's department in incidentized.
Okay.
If I can make some comments on Veterans Park in general, um, I appreciate, uh, the considerations recently regarding police presence there. Um, but I'm still getting phone calls every day regarding the lack of peace that my constituents have regarding the, the overall behavior of the people that go down there. And, I mean, maybe I just speak for myself, but when I was younger and we would go out and play ball, it'd be three or four of us, five of us. I mean, I drove by the park the other day myself, because a constituent begged me to come down, and there was probably seventy kids there. Smells like weed, uh, they're swearing, they're absolutely out of control, and as far as I'm concerned, this type of stuff should be a privilege, um, and, I don't know, it's constant problems down there. And once again, I appreciate the police presence, but I don't think you can combat it with anything less than moving the courts. I think it needs to happen, it's, it's an issue, it's a residential area, and that, I, I'm being called every day, you know. My hands are tied, because I'm not sure what else I can do. They're asking me for help. Hardworking families, young kids, you have to put up with this constantly, and I feel really bad for them, so.
Mayor, the cameras being installed? Cameras are being installed, as we speak, um, but, you know, what, what Rich is talking about, um, is not gonna stop them from going there to play basketball, it's not gonna stop them from going there, uh, immediately. It's gonna be an enforcement activity where we're gonna be able to vision, you're gonna be able to see what's going on there after the fact. But, you know, again, there, there is a problem, there's an issue because there are three basketball courts up there. Uh, that, you know, if you got one basketball court, it draws ten kids, you got three, it draws thirty kids. You get, you got three, it draws thirty kids plus their girlfriends and spectators.
Right.
And it's, there, there, it's a gathering spot, it's become a gathering spot. And what Rich is talking about, Long Taff Place, it's been a place where they park their cars, and instead of going to play basketball, they stand around and they, they do all kinds of things. And, and Rich is, Rich is, Rich is correct.
I know, uh, you know one of my best friends?
Yeah.
And he made a discussion about, he's a, uh, a private district-
And he made a discussion about he's a private security system he works for. Right, and, and it's one of the considerations we're, we're thinking about. But I think the end result is that we cannot, no matter what happens, put three basketball courts in one venue. It's just too much, it's overload. And my concern with Veterans Park is that it's in the middle of our city, so it's very, very easy. It's, it's a good thing, it's very easy to get to. And we do not want people going there to disrupt. We don't want people going there to do the kinds of things that are happening there. And, and so we're trying to put together a plan that will prevent that from happening. And I think one of the things we're looking at is, is getting that basketball, getting those basketball courts moved. When I say moved, not moved to one location. We have four or five courts around the city. And so therefore, you know, we're going to dissuade them from playing basketball, thirty strong at Veterans Field by getting, moving those baskets out of there. I spoke today with representatives of the pickleball league. The pickleball league has gone from thirty-five people to three hundred and fifty people playing pickleball in our city. So there's a, there's an opportunity to put a pickleball court up there. Nobody plays tennis anymore, we used to have tennis there. But, you know, we, we were definitely looking at getting them out of there. And we've been talking with the superintendent about the use of the middle school basketball courts again for tournament play. One of the tough things it is about being young in the city is that these kinds of opportunities, you know, are rare. They're hard to find an opportunity to play basketball in a venue like Veterans Field, but they have to, they have to respect it. And, and the problem is, it isn't the basketball players who are there to play basketball that are causing the problems. It's the people who are going there to cause problems, not the basketball players. And, and that's the sad thing because that, those are, the good kids are gonna be penalized, but we're not gonna put up with it anymore. Yeah, I'm, I'm fully, I have two basketball venues in my ward on East End. And they do respect the basketball, they play basketball, they're not there to counter. Well, you're talking creative connections. Creative connections and central civic. And, and they, again, you're right, and they, they do. And, but it's one court in the place, you know, it's, it's a group, it's a chance for six, ten kids to play basketball.
Right.
We created the situation at Veterans where thirty kids can play basketball. That's a good, that's a good point, right there. Yeah, and it's, it's not designed for that. We, we did it, and I'll tell you why we did it. We did it because the growth of Veterans Field was phenomenal in sense that people wanted to contribute resources to Veterans Field. And one of the things that we thought was a great idea was that three basketball courts. We got a private organization raised $45,000 to put that together. They ran a very, very good league, they do run a very, very good league. The problem is Veterans Field is an open park, there's no one door to go through. So there's no way to prevent people from entering that park from all different areas. And it's a very tough situation to monitor. Our police are, you know, we have a substation up there and it has made a difference, it really has made a difference. They are on scene, but still, it's how many acres that park is, how big it is, all the activities going on. It's a very, very difficult situation. We have to control it better. And the only way we can control it better is to, you know, redesign its use.
See, we have the officer up there in the substation in the vehicle, is he parked over by Taft or is he parked over by Locust? He's usually parked over by Locust. Observe.
Definitely Locust, because I slow down every day. It's helped with the speed on Locust, honestly, it's been very helpful, never seen that.
Good job, by the way, quick, I'm glad he was there during all that.
Yeah.
There, he saw them congregating and performing and he needed to address it, so did a good job.
Yeah, I mean, going to the email you sent, you've initiated a temporary police substation, President's Park, which is great. I think there's a lot of really good immediate steps that are being taken. And, and yeah, I mean, if, if we get to the point where there's, you know, another weapons incident or really large group incident, then I am supportive of, you said here, taking, removing the rims. And, you know, for a period of time to see what happens and to calm things down there because there is like an issue of, it's a privilege to be able to do that.
I wouldn't even want to wait because God forbid this is the one that really sparks some type of, that would be my question, is there a timeline regarding this?
We're working on it, is all I can say, Rich. I will, if there's another incident up there, we'll take the, we'll take the things down.
I don't, I don't know if I really like the, if there's another incident because that one incident could have gunfire like we did last year, God forbid. You know, I don't like to wait, we know the issues and I feel like it should be a really quick turnaround. It's not hard to take rims down, I could do it with my stock as set right now.
My question is, just taking the rims down gonna solve the problem? You know, we have a lot to do. And those kids, are they going up there to disrupt basketball or are they going up there to fight? Is it a central part to go fight? We're looking at all those issues. We're meeting with the school district on Thursday. I've spoken with, you know, a variety of people about this and we, we will take action. And I do know that Taft Place, those people along Taft Place are in agony when it comes to their way of life. We do have a plan to stop people from parking there any longer. You know, unfortunately, you can't stop people from smoking marijuana any longer, I mean, that's what they do.
Sure, but they're underage.
Moving the police vehicle to Taft Place. Pardon me? With moving the police vehicle to Taft Place. Chief, talk about that. Because if they're going in that.
Well, first of all, you know, I encourage, you're gonna see the officer assigned to that detail, you're gonna see him on bike patrol. The officer, we do have a few that do the bike patrol, they're gonna be on a bicycle, pedaling throughout the park throughout. So you're gonna see more of that, not with a warm weather. So where the car is parked, it's gotta be centrally located so that they can respond to calls. They're not just assigned to that park for eight hours, they're there from two to ten. And if they have to respond to a call, they need to be able to get out quickly and respond to calls. I really don't want them being cornered into, you know, Taft Place and not being able to get out and get where they need to be.
Thank you.
Chief, quick, are we writing tickets for those cars parked on Taft right now?
We need proper signage, I know there's a plan, I think you shared that with you about that thing and.
Little League parks there, little League parks there.
Sure.
And it's tough to tell those people they can't park there during Little League season until we have a parking venue on Harding. We will have a parking venue on Harding. The reason we don't have one yet is because it's gonna be, we're gonna be doing Harding and Taft on our street program and we're gonna do it all at one time. So I'm trying to do, you know, we have to dig out the side of that hill, we have to asphalt it. In the meantime, we're letting Little League play there. We hope that when Little League season is done, the road program coincides with that and we do that all together. When that happens, we are either gonna put a fence, I'm thinking anchor fence right now with signs that say no parking. And when those no parking signs are up there, the chief can go up there and issue tickets, not the chief, but this group can issue tickets. That's our plan with the parking situation there. We also don't have the Locust Avenue plant, the parking lot, open yet, that's gonna happen in the middle of Mainway.
Yes.
So we're gonna beat those cars on Taft, we'll have a parking spot closer to the basketball courts to park on Locust. But again, I agree with you that we need to remove baskets, we need to make it a smaller venue or eliminate it entirely. What I'm hoping, you know, comes from Thursday's meeting, you know, just talking about understanding the problem better. But, but I, you know, I know basketball's been a problem up there and we've created, we created, and I'm not gonna say we created a monster, but the, the, the wave of enthusiasm for doing things at the park, you know, it's hard to say no to somebody.
Their intentions were right, you know, the heart was in the right place.
Yeah, and, and again, and the league itself is well-run and that's the park part. So now they're gonna scramble. And I've told them to get ready to scramble and I'm giving them a chance to plan for their, you know, for their future and what they can do. And, and it's gonna be fine because there are gonna be more courts available to them. The toughest part they have is that the nice thing about having it all together is they only have to ask in an amen soup kitchen, same thing. Volunteers one time. It's so hard to get volunteers, especially with that, that demographic. So, you know, we're trying to just listen to what everybody says and try not to hurt anybody too much and trying to help everybody as much as we can. But we've taken all those factors into consideration.
With that, with going kind of long term, I think it would be very prudent to then start doing a recreation commission and getting that established because in that case, we could be researching best practices when it comes to community safety in parks. We could look at all of our parks holistically and, you know, do we have a basketball court at every park? Do we have a pickleball court or a tennis court and how are we going over funding for that? So if everybody's converging on veterans, is it because they're not getting access to others? Like, you know, the school district ones are locked up, Arnold Avenue doesn't have anything like that, they're the closest to the middle school, those types of things. So, you know, before we make those long-term plans to get rid of courts permanently or change them over to another one, I'd like to see a committee that works together with different stakeholders. And we do have something for that, we do have the Recreation Commission, so.
Well, two things we also have is a wintertime basketball league that's held in the gymnasiums for younger kids. The summertime basketball is, is, we are, we're working with that league. We're trying to say, what's your, what's your alternative? Unfortunately, one of the alternatives was the middle school courts, that's where they started. And they had to stop because of the construction projects and they destroyed the courts for a long time. The courts are back, back in action, but they've got, you know, they've got to get permission to use them. And now when this, something like this happens, where Veterans Field goes to high school or high school goes to Veterans Field and the fights start getting interrelated, you've got a school board that's kind of, you know, saying, well, we don't know, you know. So we're, we're just, we're trying to be part of the solution as well as, as, as coming up with a solution. So we got some things to talk about, but we're, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, as far as personally, I'm concerned, I do think we need to disassemble the basketball courts en masse that are at, at Veterans and move them and, and make sure that kids have a place to play basketball, but make it less. The other good thing about consolidating everything together, it's easier to maintain. If you have them all over the city, it's, it's harder to maintain, there's no question about it. So there's pros and cons and we're dealing with it.
Well, yeah, and there's, there's studies and there's groups that have done this.
And I, I just, I, I'd welcome, welcome any inputs we could get that would help us make better decisions in that area. If we can see what other cities are doing with the same similar problem, I think that they're a great thing to have.
I kind of did a little research on that, some cities are doing something called pocket parks, which are small, kind of like a half-court look in usually abandoned lots or areas that don't get much usage and they're, you know, two, three streets over. Then another one, another block or two, you know, and they're just throughout little.
It's just out of the, of the parking.
Yeah, so they can, and plus from a parent's perspective too, you know where your kid is, they're three streets down, not a mile and a half down at a park with sixty other kids.
Big difference, absolutely, no, I agree, that's a great.
Maybe have that conversation.
And then we have our popular roadside basketball that they set up in the street.
Right, it might prevent that, yeah.
And what you can play right in front of your parents' house, but the motor's safe, you know. But that, those are the kinds of things that we need to take a look at, but that's what's gonna happen. And that's where I am on veterans, any other questions? We'll make a motion, what is that, executive session?
105, Sub 1, Sub 8.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderman Christomars.
Alderman Halliday.
Aye.
Alderman Collins. Alderman Carpenter.
Aye. I'm gonna give this to you.